Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, December 21st, 2020 to order. First off, any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Up to number three, approval of the agenda. Need to move her in second there. Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Frake. Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Frake, resolved that the agenda for the committee of the whole of this Ember 21st, 2020 be approved. On favor? It's carried. Now we move to delegations. Up first, we have our economic development officer, Adam June. And Adams asked me to, to ensure our robust presentation to council. And as this is his first time presenting in this area, he would like to allow himself 20 minutes upfront speaking time so we can listen without interruption. And I've agreed with that. How's council feel about that? Are we going to let Adam speak for 20 minutes? Great, Adam. It looks like you got the green light. So welcome, Adam.
Thank you very much, Mayor Jordan. Just give me one second here to get the presentation up. There we go. All right. Can everybody see my, my presentation? Yes?
We're good.
All right. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Jordan and members of council. I'm excited to be here tonight to provide an economic development update, to share with you how the town's economic development practice has been taking shape, and to give you a high level overview of my economic development work plan for 2021. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge that while I've had the opportunity and pleasure to meet and work with many of you, I've not had opportunity to formally do so with all members of council. I've really tried to focus on hitting the ground running and delivering some quick wins for the town. That said, I'd like to meet with those members of council I've not today, early in the new year, and I'm very much looking forward to doing so. So this evening, I'd like to share with you some of the foundational work I've been doing since I joined the town of Grimsby, and to highlight where I think we can go through economic development and how we might get there. I'll start with a brief introduction to establish some context. I'll share some information on economic development in Niagara, some guiding principles of economic development, a sort of high level Ekdev 101. From there, I'll highlight how my immediate term efforts and focus are being informed and allocated by the strategic priorities established by this council. And then I'll share some observations from my first 120 days in this new role, and I'll conclude by providing an overview of my 2021 work plan, and how that work plan will include, as a core focus, the development of a comprehensive economic development strategy for the town of Grimsby. As I prepared to compete for the EDO role here in Grimsby, and subsequently, as I onboarded as the town's first EDO back in August, I did some extensive research, and a couple of things really stood out to me. I noted that the town's population growth rate has outpaced out of the Niagara region and the province as well, and that the residential construction was booming to accommodate that population growth. And it became immediately clear to me, Grimsby is a place people truly want to live and call home. And this got me thinking, that a big part of my role with the town was going to be to drive the employment side of the growth equation, especially when noting that the town has a significant assessment imbalance between residential and non-residential assessment. Thinking further about the employment side of things, I noted the composition of the town's economy, and I looked at sectors with high employment growth here in town. And I did some initial analysis on those high-growth sectors, as well as noting that the vast majority of Grimsby businesses are small entrepreneurial businesses with 10 or fewer employees. Clearly, I recognized that small businesses are the heart of the local economy here in Grimsby.
Cool.
Then I came across a mantra that I found most compelling in my early days with the town. That in 2019, the town of Grimsby had been identified as the second-best community in Canada by McLean's Magazine. I was thrilled to learn this, and it really put some early wind in my sails. And along with the opportunity to build an economic development practice from the ground up, I knew I had made a great choice joining the team at the town of Grimsby. With that said, I'd like to share, I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you what investing in a formal economic development agenda means to the town within the regional context. While hiring a professional EDO, Grimsby joined seven other Niagara municipalities in the region as communities who've committed to the strategic growth and diversification of their local economies. Some Niagara municipalities have been active in the Ekdev space for a number of years, and they've grown their Ekdev capacity and staff to align with their strategic objectives. Others only recently established themselves within the regional economic development context. Further, by formally entering the Ekdev space, Grimsby will benefit from a dedicated staff resource focused exclusively on a day-to-day basis on efforts and initiatives related to business retention, expansion, as well as business attraction, and to helping the town build its capacity to more effectively engage with and influence business and investment stakeholders. The town will also now benefit from access to the regional economic development ecosystem, the overview of which I've included here in a graphical representation. With access to this ecosystem comes opportunities to participate in and benefit from regional economic development initiatives, a way to more efficiently source information and access support resources. It provides more direct access to stakeholders in a number of sectors, and it provides the ability to more effectively leverage provincial and federal government supports for business and local government. Further, having chosen to invest in economic development, the town will also now be better equipped to cultivate an atmosphere and environment within the town that is conducive to existing businesses prospering, growing, and evolving, to strategically attract business, industry, and investment that aligns best with the aspirations of the community, and to maintain a quality of life for local residents in terms of economic and employment opportunities, building on the other quality-of-life pillars, including heritage and culture, recreational amenities, and environmental sustainability. And so, like many investments, developing an economic development practice is a long-term approach. It's an investment and not an expense. It must deliver results, though, and it must have a return on that investment. In order to provide this return, there are some fundamental economic development principles, some common do's and don'ts, and some best practices that I'd like to quickly share with you this evening. Firstly, I think it's important to appreciate that government and economic development officers or economic development functions do not create private sector jobs. They do, and should however, work to create an environment in the community where business owners will want to make investments in their business, investments that will lead to the creation of new jobs and the sustenance of the existing employment base. The most common and arguably the most impactful ways to do this are to create and maintain an attractive local regulatory environment and policy regime, taking steps to get the community investment-ready, actively managing the municipality's image and reputation, and supporting cultural change within the organization that allows it to be more approachable to business and investment communities. Now, these are obviously very complex and involved undertakings, and it would take more time than we have this evening to fully explore them all. So I'd like to highlight, through a do's and don'ts type of approach, how these complex foundational elements can be furthered. In terms of economic development do's, efforts focused on the following are generally accepted as best practices in smaller communities: developing a strong value proposition or propositions for the community; leveraging important partnerships within the economic development ecosystem; undertaking strategic economic development action plans and initiatives; advocating for policy development and review opportunities that will encourage and not hinder strategically-aligned business investment; and having an EDO act as the dedicated go-to resource with respect to managing communications with the business and investment community where appropriate. And especially in smaller communities, working to support the small business stakeholders in terms or to access government grants and subsidies and support programs, providing important data and statistics upon which sound business decisions can be made, and providing the most appropriate referrals, among other things. This list is of course, is of course not exhaustive, but I would submit that these are the foundational approaches for a community like Grimsby, which is only in the early days of its economic development journey. Because our economic development resources are limited, we must deploy those resources towards initiatives and activities with the greatest potential for a significant return on investment. We have to prioritize and strategize, and that means we can't do everything. So in terms of don'ts or shouldn'ts, I would highlight that focusing significant Ekdev resources on residential development is not an area our limited resources should be directed as a best and highest use. Also, while small business support is critical, it's not an EDO's role to engage at the operational level with small business owners. Doing so exposes the EDO and the town to liability should the operational support or advice provided lead to a poor or negative business outcome. When it comes to small business advocacy, our resources should be focused on higher-level supports, including such things as sourcing government grants and subsidies, making connections and referrals, and supporting site-selection relocation and expansion efforts. And lastly, as an organization, we must ensure that the economic development function does not become a dumping ground for special initiatives that don't have a perfect fit or home in a department at the town. This is far too often the case within smaller communities when the economic development function is not truly understood or appreciated. And so, I'll be working to ensure the entire town team has a fulsome and accurate understanding of how an EDO can provide value to the town and support town staff in their daily work with the organization. So with that context in place, I'd like to move our focus to exploring economic development as a strategic priority of this council and the town of Grimsby. And then I'd like to demonstrate how I've prioritized my focus and aligned my resources towards delivering on that strategic priority. Based on the strategic priorities of council, business attraction, growth, and retention efforts were to focus in four areas. And I have to give this council a lot of credit here. The four priority areas are very, very well-aligned with the best practices in economic development for a community the size of Grimsby. With that said, I did note that the priority areas were described in a somewhat verbose manner. While the concepts were bang-on, I thought for the purposes of clarity and efficiency, I would distill them down to more concise, action-oriented thematic descriptors. More specifically, we have service delivery model optimization, business retention and expansion, or BRNE, value proposition development and marketing targeted toward business attraction results, and capacity building, both internally among the town staff and council, and externally among the business community. Based on these four areas of focus and building on my past experience with respect to the time and resource allocations required to deliver on these priorities, I built my immediate-term work plan to align with the advancement of each of these goals. As you can see, BRNE will be where I focus the majority of my time and resources, followed by value prop development and marketing, and then capacity building. These three areas of focus will remain ongoing and really make up the bulk of my efforts on a day-to-day basis. For your reference, I've also included some high-level action items with, within each of the areas of focus, which I won't get into detail now, but I thought it important to highlight the critical thinking and planning that went into the development of my immediate-term work plan. But developing a work plan is only a small part of what I've been focused on for the past 120 days or so. And I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you some details with respect to my efforts today. In the early days of my onboarding, I conducted a SWOT analysis. I wanted to formalize some of what I was learning about the organization and the community. And doing so allowed me to better understand where I might need to prioritize action and focus in the immediate term. As a reference, this is a high-level summary of my SWOT analysis, which really helped inform my early undertakings. Most of this likely won't be news to you, but the process of focusing on one's environment in this way really allows for critical reflection and a more robust appreciation for the current state of play here in Grimsby. Again, reviewing each element of this analysis in a meaningful way would take longer than we have this evening, but I wanted to share this with you as a quick reference. Concurrent with my efforts to understand the current state, and as is the case in most onboarding processes, I spent and continue to spend a significant amount of time engaging with local economic development and business stakeholders, meeting with representatives of the Niagara and Hamilton Economic Development Teams, for example, and understanding the interconnectedness, or sometimes lack thereof, of those relationships, connecting with local business organizations like the DIA and the Chamber, and engaging with my EDO counterparts around the region, among others. These interactions and the takeaways from the candid discussions I've had have proven very valuable to rounding out my understanding of the community and the goals and aspirations of these community stakeholders. I've also led and participated in a number of special initiatives which have furthered my engagement with important stakeholders on important local issues. Most recently, and by way of example, I've begun efforts to organize and facilitate an industrial leaders roundtable event, which will take place in February, and will feed into the BRNE work being championed through GDAC. And I've also advanced efforts in partnership with a local industrial leader to develop and launch a skilled trades industrial manufacturing sector initiative intended to showcase opportunities with local manufacturers to local high school students considering the trades as a career path. And as I mentioned again, I've spent significant time working with local business owners and prospects in a number of different capacities. And these are the day-to-day activities I undertake to drive the economic development agenda on a daily basis. These core activities include working with businesses to help them stay and grow in town, supporting business owners as they navigate the sometimes complex world of zoning and land use planning regulation, managing efforts to identify suitable locations for business to establish themselves through the site-selection support process, and generally acting as the municipal business concierge, ensuring business owners and stakeholders are connected with the right municipal staff to help address their needs and concerns. And I've had some early successes, like leading efforts horizontally across the organization with my amazing colleagues in the planning, building, and public works departments, for example, to expedite and manage business startup efforts for a food and beverage company which recently located here in town, and working to support the establishment and expansion of Grimsby's first cottage winery. Now, while I call these successes, they're really just positive outcomes of having a dedicated staff resource acting as the intermediary between business and the municipality. They're the table stakes of economic development, if you will. But beyond those successes, there have also been some notable early economic development wins that I'd like to highlight for you. And I believe these early wins are important to help demonstrate the types of outcomes and deliverables you can and should expect now that you've made an investment in economic development. More specifically, because it's early days in the economic development journey here in Grimsby, and because budget and resources for economic development programming are limited, these resources must be, must be deployed very strategically. But sometimes, it's possible to augment early economic development budget constraints by aggressively seeking financial support through funding grant programs offered by other higher levels of government, thus increasing the financial capacity to support additional Ekdev programming. And since I've started, we've been able to secure $40,000 in grant funding from a number of sources. From the federal and provincial governments, the Ontario BIA Association and the Toronto Association of BIAs, $16,000 was secured to fund a digital Main Street initiative here in Grimsby in collaboration with the Grimsby DIA. This funding allows Main Street Grimsby businesses to access supports to take their businesses to the next level through digital transformation, including access to funding through the program's Digital Transformation Grant Program. Through the town's GDAC Committee, $14,000 in rural economic development program funding was secured through the Ontario Ministry of Agriculture, Food, and Rural Affairs, funds that will match the town's investment in efforts focused on formal business retention and expansion, or BRNE, programming. And further, we were able to access funding through Niagara Region's Local Area Municipality, or LAM, Fund. Funds again which will go towards building financial capacity to deliver on core BRNE programming and initiatives. And lastly, and this may not seem like a win to some of you, but in the regional economic development context, it's absolutely huge. We were able to very successfully coordinate a Grimsby Familiarization, or FAM, tour for the professional economic development practitioners from across Niagara. With representation from across the region, the FAM tour showcased Grimsby's downtown area, some of the significant initiatives, initiatives and developments proposed and currently underway in town, and generally exposed the group to a community many had little awareness of. It was essentially Grimsby's welcome to the Niagara economic development context, and feedback from the participants was extremely positive. Of course, these are early wins achieved during the first few months in the EDO role, wins that came within a sort of strategy vacuum before we've had the opportunity to develop a fully-informed, outcome-oriented economic development strategy. And this is where I'd like to conclude this evening, by sharing with you a high-level overview of my 2021 work plan, and by highlighting the importance of developing a comprehensive economic development strategy within and beyond that work plan. So, as we move into 2021, I'd like to share with you this high-level overview of where I'll be directing my focus and resources in the new year. In Q1 of 2021, I'll be focused on continuing efforts related to our digital Main Street initiative, furthering efforts related to formal BRNE programming, including the facilitation of the industrial leaders roundtable I mentioned, and looking at how we might optimize the way in which GDAC continues to play a critical role in economic development here in Grimsby. In Q2, certain of the Q1 initiatives will continue, but additional work on developing an immediate-term economic development communication strategy, analyzing the town's critical employment land situation, and kicking off efforts in consultation with stakeholders from around the community to develop Grimsby's value proposition as a means of positioning the town for success in terms of resident, business, and investment attraction. In Q3 and Q4, building on initial brainstorming and analysis around the GDAC table, a new working group of GDAC will kick off earnest efforts to develop a comprehensive economic development strategy for the town. This will be a comprehensive and holistic approach, and will involve significant stakeholder engagement and input, with this council being critical among those stakeholders. Of course, this is all to say that these high-level initiatives will occur above and beyond the core and ongoing day-to-day business engagement and issues management, issue management efforts that will continue to occur and evolve over time. And to conclude, and to provide a sort of sneak peek of how the strategic planning process will likely unfold, I'd like to share with you an overview of the basic process underpinning the development of an economic development strategic plan. While this process may not look like rocket science, there is a tried and tested methodology here which begins with a hardy situational analysis. Where are we at currently as a community? What are our strengths and weaknesses? What makes Grimsby truly unique? And how do we stack up against our competition? All culminating in a thorough current state assessment. Once established, the current state assessment is vetted through stakeholder engagement to ensure no stone has been left unturned, and that assumptions are solidly grounded in fact and reality. And then to start soliciting input towards the ideal future state, working to answer questions like, where do we want to go as a community? What does the ideal future state look like for Grimsby? What can or should we aspire to as a community? And what can we realistically accomplish or achieve over the next three to five years? Once we know where we're at, and we know, and we have a relatively clear idea of where we want to go, our ideal future state, we move to considering how we will deploy our resources to get where we want to go. We start looking at the tactics we will be required to employ to move towards our strategic goals. We focus, we focus on determining who is going to do what, by when, and with what resources, all of which culminates in the development of a tactical implementation plan, the month-to-month how of our strategy, and then we implement. So while this high-level overview, so while this is a high-level overview, I find it helpful to try and visualize some of this better, to understand the theory behind this proven methodology. So to illustrate, and please keep in mind, I'm not a graphic designer by any stretch, if we can agree on where we're at, and we can align on where we want to go, that is really only two-thirds of the equation. Without a well-thought-out tactical implementation or action plan, we might end up running around rudderless, inefficiently expending our limited resources. But, when the three elements of the strategic planning process are delivered upon well, we can much more effectively implement the strategy and more efficiently achieve our strategic goals. And it's important to note that having a strategy in place does not preclude us from taking advantage of opportunities that may emerge, opportunities we couldn't possibly have planned for or anticipated years in advance. Rather, built into the strategy will be a methodology by which off-plan opportunities are evaluated and considered. Because if we go off-plan, certain initiatives in our strategy might have to be delayed, canceled, or altered. And the off-plan evaluation process will help us ensure we are getting more value out of going off-plan than if we stayed on-plan. So I look forward to engaging with this council as critical stakeholders to this process in 2021, and to ensuring our plan is action-driven and results and outcome-oriented. Because I know none of us wants a strategic plan to become just a dusty document that sits on a shelf somewhere. So to recap, I've shared with you my excitement about being a part of the investment this council and community has made in economic development, and that during these early days, I've been impressed by the professional team here at Town Hall. We've explored, we've explored some fundamental or foundational Ekdev principles, a sort of Ekdev 101. I've highlighted the linkages between my work plan and the direction provided by this council through its strategic priority initiatives. I've shared with you a little about my exciting first 120 days or so in this new role here in Grimsby, and we've looked at my work plan for 2021 and aligned on the principles and tenants of how we might move forward in the development of a strong, well-informed economic development strategy for the town of Grimsby. So I thank you all for your time and attention this evening, and for the opportunity to present to you. And I would welcome any questions you might have at this time. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Adam. We're looking forward to brighter things in 2021. Councillor Cadwell, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Not so much a question, but just to give a bit of a, an update with my experiences with Adam so far as Chair of GDAC. Back in the early fall, I was contacted by a local business up on the mountain that had some concerns and issues regarding how they wanted to move forward from a zoning perspective. And I met with them, had a good discussion, and I introduced Adam to, to the business folks there, and Adam was just, I gotta say, was top shelf with them. I got a, I got a response back from the business. With, again, it was a zoning issue that they were, the business was really dealing with the planning department. But with Adam getting involved, he brought an economic development perspective to the, on the, on the table, and working with our staff, and it was very good. It was a good, good partnership there, too. Also, I just wanted, for the rest of the council and, and people that, Adam has now, our GDAC meetings, we've changed the meeting format under Adam's direction, and the support of the committee members was unanimous, that we're now meeting every other month, which is good, starting in January. And also, in between that, the, our meetings, we've got two groups set up through the committee that were doing a workshop initiatives under economic development. So again, that was something that Adam had brought for discussion at our last GDAC committee advisory meeting, and it was a good discussion back and forth, and the members were very supportive, too. So I just want to thank Adam for the, for the great work he's doing so far for Grimsby. Thank you. Good presentation.
Councillor Vane.
Thank you. Good evening, Adam. I want to thank you. I've heard some very good things about you. I appreciate that. What I want to ask you is, only in regards to the PowerPoint presentation, are you going to be sharing this with council? I was enjoying reading it, but you were going through quite quickly. Understandably, it's not my fault to you. I'm just saying that I would like to see a copy of it, if you don't mind, if you could email it to us, just so we can go over it. And keep up the great work. From what I'm hearing, you're doing an awesome job. Thank you so much. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you as well. Thank you, councillor. And yes, I will, I will be circulating the PowerPoint document.
Councillor Vardy.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Adam. That was an excellent presentation. I really appreciate it. It seems to me, while I'm not an expert in this, that you've got a very well-thought-out plan. And I look forward to hearing more about, about what you're up to and talking a bit about the future. One thing, seeing as it's the, the hot topic tonight, heritage, I'm very glad to see that in your SWOT analysis, that you have listed heritage as a strength. SWOT analysis, that you have listed heritage as a strength, which I believe is one of those things that will attract employers to Grimsby. So thank you very much, and I look forward to talking to you more in the future. And you've got great presentation skills. If I ever need to make a presentation, I'm going to come knocking on your door. All right, thank you.
No problem. Please do.
Counselor Bothall.
Thanks, too, Adam. That was a great presentation. It looks like your plate is very, very full for some time to come, and I know you're probably very good at juggling as well. So I'm also looking forward to talking to you a bit more about what your vision is moving long range. I just wondered if you could help clarify for me, and I think I grasped a couple concepts in your presentation where you noted that you would do development, application, processing, review. I'd like to know what that means, and you talked about the skilled trades and career path, and I just wondered if you're looking at how that links to increasing the business retention and employment and how far you go on that path, and also how you prioritize who needs support.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sure, the development approvals process is a process that is developed internally and then is sort of taken to the business investment development community. And having had experience as the Niagara region's first expediter and then moving into the role of manager of expedited services, we found that if there was someone with a focus on sort of creating a tighter linkage between what the objectives of the process are and what the outcomes for the business developer investor is, that sometimes there was slack in that process that could be sort of optimized. And really, it's just about taking a critical look at how we're doing things and saying, okay, there are a number of stakeholders involved. How is this policy, how is this process, review process going to affect both of them? And sort of building that out in a way that allows us to be critical and to improve where we can and to ensure that the town's interests are protected as well. So I think that's sort of the high-level overview. Time is money, and moving quickly is important, but also making sure that we have our interests covered as a municipality is very important as well. In terms of the skilled trades, yes, that's absolutely going to be a big part of the B R E work, and that's really where that initiative came from was a conversation I had with a local industrial leader who was looking at bringing in employees from well outside of Grimsby. And his thought was, if we could develop talent internally to the town of Grimsby, that folks could stay, young folks could stay and grow in a career here in Grimsby as opposed to leaving the community. And so absolutely, that's going to be a big part of the B R E effort is to work with different manufacturers and industrialists and business owners to see where they might benefit greatest from having an audience with these young students who are just in the process of determining where their career path is going to take them. And Counselor Bothall, I think there might have been one other question that I missed. Was there a third question?
Just how you prioritize who needs support from you, from the act of.
Oh, okay. Typically, it's a real juggling act, and a lot of it is gut and common sense, but in most cases, you have to look at where the biggest return on the investment is going to be. But it's a moving target. I couldn't suggest there's a strategic or a very specific methodology in the way I do that. I try and be accessible at all times. I'm not a nine-to-five type of guy. I talk to business owners in the evening and on weekends, and so it's really just about understanding where the time sensitivity lies and sort of triaging the different wants for support and guidance.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Adam.
Counselor Frake, how are you?
Good to see you.
You as well.
I see you settled in very well.
Trying.
I mean, I must admit, it was really, really refreshing to see such a well-thought-out business plan. I mean, I haven't seen too much of that since I've joined council, and I must admit, coming from the corporate world, that's exactly whatever I would have expected to see. So congratulations on putting together a great plan. So you've got a fair amount of work ahead of you, and you've got a few challenges with COVID hanging over our heads as well. So anyways, I want to echo that what Counselor Vardy said, that heritage and culture certainly is a big item on all of our agendas these days, and I'm glad to see that you see that as one of the economic problems for Grimsby. On another note, just wanted to ask you a few questions. Do you have enough tools in your kit to attract, or do you need something new or different in your toolkit to attract business into Grimsby? Is there something missing that we can do or try to do for you to help you make this a real success?
Certainly, resources, both financial and administrative, to help support programming and to help me balance the doing with the planning. So half my day is spent doing the work, and then the other half is spent planning ahead. So additional resources are always welcome, and I'm not going to lie, I would welcome them with open arms. But I think when we look at business attraction at a high level, you know, some work and some focus on our employment land situation here in Grimsby, I think is going to be very important. We don't have a lot of products when it comes to shovel-ready available employment lands, and so some focus and some energy and some resources tied to really figuring that out through an inventory and analysis and maybe the development of an employment land C I P, all things that we'll talk about during the strategic planning process. But I mean, at this point, it's early days. I think we're going to start to see sort of the hockey stick curve where we start out a little slowly and then we increase speed very quickly, and that may sort of drive the need for additional resources. But right now, I think between the programming budget I have and the additional resources that we've been able to secure, I think I'm good that way. But I think the employment land piece is going to be a really critical piece to wrap our heads around.
Okay, yeah, I figured you might say that. I was actually more inclined to relate to, you know, as a municipality, we don't have the luxury, of course, of offering tax reductions and so on and so forth, like you can do at the municipal level and at the federal level. And that's unfortunate, but that's just the nature of the beast. But so we have to find other creative ways to attract businesses into the community. I noticed that there is one particular initiative that Rogers has rolled out there recently, and that's they've chosen Grimsby as one of the five towns in Ontario for 5G, installation of 5G technology, which is a big driver and very attractive piece of technology for businesses such as some of the ones you listed on your slides. And you and I have spent some time together discussing a lot of things in the early stages of when you joined us. And you know, I mean, so I think you know where I'm coming from in some of those things. So I mean, I don't know if that's going to be something you can use to try and attract. It is an attraction for businesses. They need high-speed access to technology and that. So that's, I'm sure you'll, hopefully you'll be using that as one of your tools. The other thing is I wanted to ask you, is there any industry out there you think that stands out for us to focus on, to try and attract? I know we have a land issue. We have, that is a big issue for us, that we can attract into Grimsby. That's part one of the question. The other thing is, in terms of expansion, business expansion, you know, and I know, because we've had this discussion, that a lot of industry, a lot of companies here in Grimsby was actually kind of in an expansion mode before COVID hit. We've talked about that. So the thing is, I mean, I know they've put all their plans on hold for the time being, but how, you know, it's very difficult to get that kind of information out of companies are going to expand because they hold those things very close and near to their heart, and they're confidential. Some of them, some of them for corporate reasons, because they're, you know, they trade on the stock exchange, that type of thing, so they can't let that kind of information get out. So I don't know if, how we can zero in on some of those companies who might be looking at expansion of some kind, and we don't want to see them move out of Grimsby before we find out or have plans to move out of Grimsby. I don't know how you would focus on that. Maybe you can give me some ideas of what you're thinking about.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the initial question around sort of what can make Grimsby an attractive location for a business to relocate or someone to make an investment? I think the 5G is important, and what that really plays into is the value proposition for Grimsby. And I think a lot of the work that I'm going to be focusing on, and I'm going to be coming to council and CLT and the Chamber and the D I A, is to do some workshopping around value propositions. What is it that's meaningful? What is it that we can push to the front of our messaging that will be relevant to people looking to make those relocation and investment decisions? You know, we can talk about the skills alignment. You know, they really want to come to a location where there's a talent pool and a labor pool that has skills aligned with the skills they need. So as part of the strategic planning process, we would take a deep dive into what our labor pool looks like and who those skill sets are advantageous to, and then target those sectors. So that's again, part of the strategic planning process. But I think rounding out the value proposition and making sure that, you know, when you ask an municipal employee or someone at the bank or someone walking down Main Street, why Grimsby, you get at least a very similar response, right? So everyone's on the same page with what makes Grimsby unique and why people should consider it. So I think that's part of the value prop work that I'll be undertaking. On the expansion side of things, you're absolutely right. There are a number of companies, a number of major industrial manufacturing companies who are quietly looking to expand. So they don't, you know, they don't have much need for support at this moment from the town, so we don't get a lot of that information in real time. But part of what I'm doing in the new year through the Industrial Leaders and Business Leaders Roundtable is to sort of establish a relationship with business owners on a very confidential basis with them to sort of figure out a way to engage with them, pull early warning information out of them, have them be candid enough with me and with us so that we can really understand what's driving their business decision and what's driving them to expand. And then again, with all with the goal of making sure that they can do it here as opposed to leaving the community. So yeah, I think just building that trust and competence with them is very important. I heard from a lot of the industrial leaders I met with early on that, and I was one of the first people from county staff that had been out to see them. And that's not uncommon in a community that doesn't have an economic development function or is focused on other things. But I think just developing and cultivating that relationship will go a long way to opening the doors and the information flow.
Thank you. I won't take up more of your time, because I'm sure there's other questions and other councils that want to ask you a few questions. But thank you so much for a very refreshing presentation. I think you have a great business plan, and I'm sure that we will all endorse it and help you wherever we can. So please just, and we'll be there.
Thank you so much.
And Merry Christmas, Adam. To you, Union.
You as well. You as well.
Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thank you, Adam, for a great presentation. Yes, it was a high-level presentation. I was quite impressed, as everybody else has been, with your organizational skills and the way you've presented yourself. It looks like you've hit the ground running. I've always been an advocate for an economic development officer in our town, and one of the reasons was, and right now you can't have that direct experience, is that I always felt that there was a lot of businesses that were interested in Grimsby coming in and knocking on our town by coming into the town offices and not meeting up with an economic development officer. Unfortunately, right now, of course, we're in the middle of a pandemic and the Town Hall is closed, but I see, once we get out of this pandemic, late spring, early summer, that that might start to evolve, especially with the way, I think, when we get out of this, that there's going to be a lot of activity. And you seem to be in tune to that by being out there in the field and knocking on doors, networking with your counterparts in the region. And I think that's a huge part of this whole process, is getting to know who's out there and what they're doing. And they, as Counselor Frake alluded to, a lot of businesses keep things close to their chest. They're not going to tell you what's going on, but at some point, if you've developed the relationships that one should as an economic development officer, they're going to maybe at some point pick up that phone and give you a call and say, you know, we were thinking of doing this, and then you're right there, right on the mark. And I think that's why it's so important that somebody like yourself is out there. And I feel very confident that you're doing those things that we need to see happen to grow the economy in our town. And I'm really happy to see that you're doing all those things. But I believe that we've missed the mark on many occasions over the years with people coming into our Town Hall and felt like, oh, the sleepy little town, I don't think they're really interested in us setting up shop here. We'll go down the street somewhere else. So we gotta, we can't let that ever happen going forward, once we get back on track with the town being open again once we're through this pandemic. So, and I think you realize that. So I'm so happy to have you here and thanks for the presentation and Merry Christmas.
You as well, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, great presentation. Thanks. I'm fortunate enough to be on G D A C, so I get to see some of your presentations, some other presentations you've given to us, and they're always well-done. I want to echo some of the things that Counselor Dunstall said, that it's great to have this plan moving forward. But I'd be remiss a little bit, too, if I didn't mention that, you know, I'm getting a lot of very positive feedback over the past 120 days or so that you've been here from the business world, the people who, when they looked to the town and looked for information and didn't really know where to go because not everything totally aligns, and where you've gotten involved and you've been able to help guide them through processes like you have already heard from Counselor Cadwell with several businesses on top of the mountain. And you've been able to help guide and make that process a lot easier for them, and I know it's very, very much appreciated. So thanks again.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Vardy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things that came to mind while listening to this discussion. One was, do you take into consideration in your plan using the mayor to help attract businesses come? Because certainly if they see, you know, that the mayor is very interested in, you know, an example of that could be the old biodigester site and that Miller Waste or White Owl has come in and, you know, they've made a huge expansion up there. And, you know, I know our mayor was involved in some of those discussions. So sometimes having the mayor on side or accessible gives some impetus to some of those discussions. So that's one question. The other thing is, have you thought of including in your network things like Manufacturers Association and also the local colleges because they support the trades, right? So just a couple of things to think about. I don't know if you want to respond, but.
Sure, be happy to. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, absolutely. I've spoken with Mayor Jordan early on, and we had some visions and ideas of doing a bit of a corporate door-knocking campaign that, given COVID, wasn't exactly able to play out the way we had hoped. But, you know, I have used, utilized Mayor Jordan and his role, you know, taking him out to see the new Boondog office space, for example. But I agree, yes, the idea of leveraging the mayor for these sorts of things is quite a good common practice. And I think what we'll do is ask the mayor if he would be willing to bring words of welcome when we do our Industrial Leaders Roundtable in the new year. I think that'll be important for that group to see that the mayor's engaged and that sort of thing. So 100%, I couldn't agree with you more. On the second question, with the professional associations and the college and university, that's all part of the broader ecosystem. And a lot of the interconnectedness comes through some of the professional organizations that I'm a member of, so the Economic Developmenters Council of Ontario and the Economic Development Council of Canada, you know, they keep us up to speed and they keep us connected with some of those stakeholders. and the Economic Development Council of Canada, you know, they keep us up to speed and they keep us connected with some of those stakeholders. But I agree Niagara College and Mohawk and Brock, and these are all, you know, great resources. And I've worked with staff in their skilled trades programs previously, so have some relationships there. So we will absolutely be leveraging them as well.
Thank you very, oh, Counselor Vardy, go ahead.
Coming, maybe it's an ideal spot to, to have a little satellite campus here in Grimsby.
Make a little note of that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. Thank you very much for your presentation, Adam. And to answer your question right away, I, I look forward to participating any way I can to further the economic development in, in Grimsby any way I can. And I just want to wish, thank you again for a great presentation and wish you safe and Merry Christmas.
You as well to you and your family.
Yep. Thank you very much, Adam. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Up next, we have Trevor's not available. Oh, sorry. We need to do the resolution to receive our presentation. Need a mover and seconder. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Cadwell. Result of the delegation from Adam June, Economic Development Officer be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, Trevor Zulo couldn't be here tonight. So we do have a holiday greetings video. I just need a mover and seconder to receive it. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Ritchie. I'm gonna play the video now. All right. Merry Christmas and happy holidays from all of Grimsby Town Council.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas and have a happy holiday.
Have a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy holiday.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays to one and all.
From my family to yours. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Merry Christmas. Have a safe and happy new year.
Merry Christmas and wonderful season. Wishes to all, be well and be safe.
And me and the elves, Merry Christmas and have a happy holiday.
Well, that brings back memories. What a great video and what a great night it was with the reverse parade. And here's hoping we don't have a second reverse parade in 2021. So moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Ritchie. Result of the delegation regarding the holiday greetings video be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have William Lisk and Fred Lozani regarding CEP 20 dash 02 Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package. We just asked that we will take questions after, when we're talking about it in the regular part of the meeting. Welcome, William and Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and thank you to everybody who's on committee tonight, although I can see everybody. I just wanted to say a few words about that report. And then say happy holidays when I close. I guess we're getting close to a milestone. I wanted to bring to your attention that in 2010, Toronto Star published a newspaper article about all the great heritage things that Lozani was doing in Grimsby. I'd like to circulate that if anybody's interested, but we actually made the paper about how great a job we were doing preserving the heritage on Main Street. It might be newsworthy. I sent it to Antoneta a few minutes ago, but I can send it. We constructed or renovated or rebuilt or restored two homes from the Pettit family and one from the Maplehurst Homestead that originally was constructed in 1799. And also Rock Chapel Church on Ridge Road, which was constructed in 1873. So we just wanted to start off by saying we've been contributing to heritage in Grimsby and we wish to continue doing so. We do agree with the staff recommendation going to council tonight with respect to the Heritage Conservation District. We're not speaking to, we didn't delegate, but I wanted to mention that because I think it's tied into what's before committee tonight. In my view, my submission, committee, you've got three processes going at the same time that aren't speaking together as well as they could. You've got the Heritage Conservation District matter. You've got planning applications submitted by Lozani. And then you've also got several individual designations picked for certain properties on Main Street. What I'm going to take you through is just a few submissions where I think they should be speaking together a little bit better. So first thing I want to bring to your attention, make sure everybody on committee is a hundred percent clear that the properties in question at 141 to 147 Main Street operated by the DeVries family now as Cole's Nursery are not the original Cole nursery site. In fact, one of the two properties was never owned or operated by the Cole family and was not used as a nursery until in the 1990s when Harry DeVries bought the property. So the whole lineage of Coles really doesn't translate as well as it may. With respect to the Lozani application, 21 months ago, it was proposed in March of 2019. And in May of 2019, an agreement was executed between Lozani and the town. I can provide a copy after the, after the meeting, which required Lozani to produce a heritage impact study. Where that differs from the heritage reports that come to, through the Heritage Advisory Committee is it doesn't just speak to the heritage value of the properties, but it also speaks to how the proposed development impacts those values. And I think that in my submission, that's information that committee and council should have when they vote on these things. In addition to that, the agreement in May 2019 required Lozani to pay if the town wanted to peer review that report. So that heritage impact study that Lozani submits, the town can say, we like it or we don't trust it. We want it peer reviewed at your cost, Lozani. In my view, that would have been a better process than the one we're looking at right now. That brings me to Bill 108. We're, according to the ministry, I was just on their website a few minutes ago. They're, they're still saying that this is going to be in force in seven business days. And I just wanted to quote what they're saying about municipalities. They say this will enhance the provincial direction on the purpose intent of the Ontario Heritage Act to provide greater clarity to municipalities about how to interpret the act. So, I mean, I'd like to say that greater clarity would be very useful in a case like this where there's a planning application, there's a community concerned, and there's designation properties as well. I also want to make sure committee, when doing their vote tonight, are aware of the financial harm to the DeVries, DeVries family. They do have skin in the game. They have a stake in the project. And the decision that council and committee could make could affect the retirement of the DeVries family. So I want you to be aware of that just as a side. So just to wrap up, I know you have a big, a huge agenda for tonight. I just want to quickly go over the three processes you've got going here. You've got the Heritage Conservation District Study. We support that for the main reason that that is an even-handed way of dealing with the community. Everybody within a swath of area is subject to the study. That the problem that we have and we've had in the past where there's an individual property proposed for designation is it seems like you're targeting the property, you're targeting a landowner. You know, or you're cherry picking. In this case, it does have a community-wide impact to it. And that's why we support it, subject to some of the recommendations from staff. With respect to the individual property designations under section 29 that are before committee tonight, like I said, there's a, a planning application in place. There's plans for the project. There's a heritage impact study prepared that in my view ought to be or have been provided to committee and council in advance. And also a right for the town to say, we still want it peer reviewed by our consultant and we want Lozani to pay. In my view, that would be the best result for your ratepayers in terms of saving money and preserving their interests. Lastly, just the Lozani planning applications. I would like to circulate that Toronto Star article so that you know that the planning applications are in good hands when it comes to caring about the town and the streetscape and not making it look like the rest of the commercial part of Grimsby. So here's the request. The request is either don't endorse the request to designate to council for the reasons I've given, or defer it until you get direction from either the the Heritage Conservation District Study or from Bill 108. Either way, you'll get more direction and we'll pull all these applications, the planning applications, the impact study, the community study, as well as the individuals, all into one and make it more worthwhile for your time. Subject to any questions that through you, Mr. Chair, any of the members on committee have for me, that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your presentation, William. And I just seeing no questions. I want you to have a great Christmas, Happy New Year. And if we do have any questions later, hopefully you will stay around for a little bit longer in the meeting. Just need a mover and seconder to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Sharp. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Sharp. Result of the delegation from William Lasky be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have adoption of the Committee of Adjustment Minutes from November 24th, 2020 and the Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Minutes of December 8th, 2020. I need a mover and seconder. Moved by Counselor Frake, seconder, Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Dunstall. Result of the Committee of Adjustment Minutes of November 24th, 2020 and the Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Minutes of December 8th, 2020 be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have a report, CEP 20 dash 02 Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated December 21st, 2020. Mover and seconder to get it on the floor. Counselor Cadwell, Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Frake. Result of the CEP 20 dash 02 Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated December 21st, 2020 be approved. All in favor? Counselor Bothwell, I do.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just have a question regarding this. Just with respect, because this is with respect to the delegation that we just heard from with respect to 147 and 141 Main Street East. I, I'm in support of this because we've had our staff do significant research on these designation reports to move them forward over a number of months back and forth. But I would like staff just to comment on some of the key attributes that are, that are noted on the 141 and 147 properties and, and just to for council to understand what those designation attributes are. And if there was information that the Heritage Committee, you know, that the, they, they refer to a report, a heritage impact assessment in July 2020. I just wondered if that was something that was considered or the, the the information that would have been contained in that was part of the consultations as part of the drafting of this report. If staff could just comment on that, that would be appreciated.
Certainly, we have all of planning here. So whoever wants to take it, certainly go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I could start.
Sure, perfect, Antonia.
Okay, per, thank you. So first off, we'd like to say that, you know, we respectfully disagree with Mr. Lisk's, Lisk's submission that the designation shouldn't move forward where we strongly believe the designation should move forward of the properties. In fact, the development applications should remain independent of designations under the Ontario Heritage Act. We have criteria that we have to evaluate those properties by. We use the criterias given to us by the act and it met those criterias. In fact, the draft reports were first presented to the Grimsby or Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee on May 7th, 2019. We then proceeded to have a peer review that was requested and that came back supporting staff's findings. The HIA does not play into whether or not we designate a property. Once the application is dealt with, that will play with into terms of how the buildings get retained or what happens with the building. So I hope that that helps answer. Counselor Bothwell's and maybe council's questions. Thank you.
It does. Thank you very much, Antonetta.
Thank you, Antonetta. Seeing no further questions, I'll read the resolution again. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Frake, resolve that C P twenty dash zero two Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated December twenty first, two thousand and twenty be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Next, we have the consent adjust agenda. Our report F I N twenty dash nineteen, report D P W twenty dash forty nine, and memo regarding Bill twenty. Two twenty nine, schedule six. I need a mover and seconder. Move by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Ritchie. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that the committee of the whole hereby approves the following items. And the various consent items be approved on the recommendation as contained therein. Report F I N twenty dash nineteen, report D P W twenty dash forty nine, and memo regarding Bill two twenty nine. Schedule six amendment to the Conservation Authorities Act. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, item. Six point one administration and finance. Report nine point one. D P W twenty dash fifty. And Brandon, you're going to speak on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Sarah, if you can just let Nancy in as well, or Devon. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, bringing this report forward to you for council's consideration. To communicate the results of the two thousand and twenty development charges background study, which is included with the our staff report as appendix A. Resolution provided in the staff report outlines the timelines we need to adhere to with respect to public consultation. And the bylaw ratification to bring the recommendations of the study. In the report into effect. The report has been posted on the town's website today and the council meeting on February first will be used to give the opportunity for the public to provide their input into the study. Notice of the meeting will be communicated to the public on our website, social media, and in the local newspapers, the first of January. Through this study, the town is committing approximately four forty two million dollars of capital investments replay relating to the support. Of future growth within our community over the next five years, approximately twenty. Million of that is recoverable through development charges with eight and a half million being funded through tax. Tax based or rate bait res rate based revenues. Staff will be including the various projects in our community budget forecast, bringing in two thousand and twenty one, and we'll be working with our director of corporate services, Stephen. Groninger to develop a strategy for funding the town's portion of these projects. As well as ensuring financing is in place to cover the expenses until the D C. Calc or sorry, D C fees have been collected. With respect to the fee structure, residential component largely remains unchanged between the two thousand and sixteen and the two thousand and twenty studies. When comparing the non residential industrial and the non residential. Industrial rates will be seeing a thirty percent and a twenty seven percent decrease respectively in those fees. Next steps will be the public meeting on February first, two thousand and twenty one, with the bylaw ratification anticipated for March first, two thousand and twenty. Again, Nancy Neal is attending the meeting on behalf of Watson Associates and Nancy and myself would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Sorry, Brandon, Nancy hasn't joined.
Oh, she hasn't?
No.
Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Appreciate all the work that Brandon has done. I know this project's been ongoing since the beginning of COVID and. Changes that came through and he's. Worked well with the consultant to come up with something that's very comprehensive concerning last one we did was two thousand and sixteen. I also appreciate that they took into consideration my comments about. How we can support heritage heritage studies through. And that the consultant reviewed as well as a number of municipalities that I've designed. The capital costs have been captured through. Somebody's not muted. Thank you. It was Harry. So I appreciate that they took into consideration that. Other municipalities do capture heritage studies within their capital D C summaries and as a result amended. The capital chart at the back page. Pull it up, page five 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 hyphen five, I think it is, to include something called now instead of just secondary plans are now called community planning studies. And those community planning studies are for a number of areas in Grimsby, including Main Street East Corridor. A Main Street West Downtown, and there's a number of other studies for the Grimsby High School area as a secondary plan. But by incorporating them into the community planning study, D C costs, we now have a way to recover. Additional costs for heritage studies, which are really important because we did not have. A source of funding outside of the tax levy and it should be. Where a community where their importance and focus for these types of things which are growth related are covered. And so I'm glad to see that and I appreciate that. As well, I I am interested to see the. The projected areas of intensification in the report on pages A hyphen thirteen and A hyphen fourteen, I believe, where. They've indicated parcels of land that are potential for intensification, and again, it's just a forecast. But it does show where those potential locations are if the community is interested in knowing. How the numbers were derived at and where those locations are, it's worth having a look at. So I I understand also from from that Watson has been. Working closely with the region as well and our planning staff to how this methodology was worked out with respect to the. The new population densities that the region is going to be bringing forward into their land needs methods as. Land needs assessment methodology and the number of persons per unit, the types of units and all that stuff is a very complex. Formula and calculation that that's what their experts at and they've. They've been in consultation with the region and planning to develop this report, so. I just appreciate that. I appreciate the information that's in it. I just wonder if maybe it's a little bit. When I looked at the the map and the potential ocean locations of intensification, I did not see the Coles property on there. So I I don't know if it's just an oversight or. There's further areas of intensification that were not captured in this report, but maybe that can come up further in the public discussion. So again, I just want to thank Watson and Brandon for their work on this report and for. Definitely considering heritage as a key component of the capital projects. In this in the D C charges study. Thank you.
So thank you, if I can just comment on that, Mr. Mayor, apologize. So with respect to the Coles property, yes, there are properties that are. Be developed that have yet to be captured and that weren't captured in the study. Unfortunately, there is a a period of time where we kind of have to draw the line in terms of where where we. Include the data for the application, so it's kind of like your your drop dead date, I guess, if you want to call for lack of a better term, and then beyond that. You know, those will be not considered as part of the study, but captured as part of the next development review going forward. So it is a bit of a forecast. And we have to establish a date where we kind of draw the line in terms of who who gets in in terms of that development growth and and who who doesn't, so. Hopefully, in the end, it all gets washed out and and the evens out across the board in terms of some of the assumptions that we're making with areas that are developed. Will develop may may not occur, so. Hopefully, that answers your question, and. I do appreciate your your thanks, and I now that Nancy's in, I do want to thank her as well. She's been burning the midnight oil the last last week or so. I believe she finalized the report at two thirty in the morning. I'm not sure which day it was, but so.
Me either.
I do want to thank Nancy as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Nancy and Brandon, both of you. Thanks again.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Watson Associates there. I have a question, um, because I hear about. The studies for heritage, isn't isn't heritage cultural district study by itself covered under the development charges?
That's through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it can be, at least a portion of it that. Can be used towards helping to. The planning application process to see where. Development can happen, where heritage features. And buildings need to be preserved through the development process, so. Quite often, there's a benefit to existing to those types of studies as well as a growth component now. We did some research and there are a number of municipalities other than. Yourselves that have included these types of studies. What we did with staff as we went back and reviewed the what we originally had in as secondary plan areas. And we broadened those studies and we're calling them community plans now so that each one of them could potentially have a heritage. District plan component to it, so as part of the overarching community plan. The heritage in each of those areas will be reviewed as part of the the study. That we've now come forward with and we increased the cost of those a bit to allow. That additional heritage component to be added in to the overarching projects.
Thank you. So I. That's where I thought, but I I guess I want to, so can the heritage, is there? Is the heritage cultural district study by itself then covered under these under the development charges? I see that it works with other tools that we can use components of the heritage and we'd be covered for the studies. Just wondering if by itself, if it's just the heritage cultural district study, would that be covered under these development charges?
I think I think this, sorry to inter interject, I think this might be a a comment that maybe our. Planning director may comment on. I think it's a more of the term that we're using may be confusing thing, so maybe I can ask just Antonette if she can. Jump in on on and help steer that conversation.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps I I can contribute, but I defer to Nancy's expertise. It was my understanding based on our conversation. That Heritage Conservation District's portions of it can be covered under the current regime. Under the future regime, it's questionable that they're going to be covered and Heritage Conservation Districts as a standalone item will likely not be covered. But a heritage component of a larger planning study could be covered and is likely. Much more cost recoverable than a Heritage Conservation District on its own. That's what I understood from our conversation, but again, I certainly defer to Nancy's expertise to validate what was said and based on all of your research, Nancy.
Absolutely, absolutely. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The studies that currently include heritage studies. Are development charge studies that were undertaken and bylaws that were passed for the because of those studies prior to the legislative change. That just took place in September of this year, so. Understanding that as part of the planning process, every municipality wants to ensure that they, you know. Preserve their heritage features and and buildings and areas in their municipalities. They they tend to be a component of larger studies. And as it would relate to providing that. Information for the planning process, it would definitely be eligible, and that's why we've increased. And broaden the scope of four of the projects that are in the background study. But yeah, as to whether or not one could stand on its own, it might be something that. You know, gets challenged at the LPAT at some point in the future. But certainly, the way we've now embraced a component of those in the studies, I don't think it's going to be an issue.
And you stated that that legislation was passed in September?
Yeah, through Bill one ninety seven and Bill one oh eight, there was a change to the development charge legislation. The main change was in the past, the development charge study used to say you can collect for anything. For any service that is related to growth that you provide except for, and then they listed A, B, C, D. Now what they've done is and is they've changed it to say you can only collect for. X, Y, Z. And the X, Y, Z, that new list of twenty five services doesn't include. Planning studies. However, through consultation with the province and the development community over the past year and a half. It was understood that they could still be included as a class of study. Or as a class of service, as long as you could attribute. The costs of those studies to the services that are development charge eligible. And so for yourself, that's water, wastewater, stormwater services, roads. Parks and Recreation, fire and library. So, you know, is there a heritage component to your streetscapes? Absolutely. So that's roads. And related. Features that you can include in there. Do all of those community plans and planning studies help to define what goes into your official plan amendments? And updates? Yes, they do. So in that way, if we have them as part of a a broader project. That helps to feed the whole planning process right up to your official plan amendments, then it shouldn't be an issue, including them. When it gets into one off studies, heritage is not a defined service right now under the new regime. So it has to be part of that broader base planning studies that feed the planning process. Does that help?
Well, that that helps a lot, and that's where, so I don't see anything, if this just was just changed in September, I don't see anything changing in legislation in the future. In regards to going back to the way it used to be. Not anyways, I I don't see, so.
Probably not with everything that they've gone through in the last year and a half.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great report. I know there's a lot of for the two pages or three page, four pages that you presented. I'm sure there's a thousand pages behind it. So, so no, I know there's lots of hard work. I my question is very encouraging what I'm hearing about the about the. The heritage costs being possibly covered in our D C. That's 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 very interesting. But I my question is probably more simple. I'm looking at the numbers here. You're saying that over the next five years, the expenditures are expected to be about forty two million and change. Is that that's correct, right?
Correct.
That's right.
It looks like we, like if I'm reading this correctly, we have a shortfall, potential shortfall. If you look at it in today's terms, over the next five years of eleven million dollars, and we have to make that up in D C's going forward. Is that the way it works?
The eleven million dollars is actually still growth related dollars, but it will benefit growth outside of the planning periods. That we're using for these calculations. So for example, for Parks and Recreation, we're only looking at ten years worth of growth. Some of the projects that have been included in there in the list of capital will benefit more than just the growth in the next ten years. So we have to do a deduction for what benefits that post period growth. So you will recover it over time. It'll just be a longer period of time. Because we always want to match the capital expenditure related to the infrastructure. To the growth that it is serving. So I'll give you an an easy example. If you had one. Soccer field for every ten thousand people and you were going to grow by. Fifteen thousand people, you may build two soccer fields. But half of one of them will benefit additional growth outside the ten years. Does that help? So we, for each project, we look at. What the growth need is that within the period that we're embracing in the calculations for each service and what. Projects will provide additional capacity that will help service the post period. Growth. That post period growth will need to be cash flowed by the town. But it will eventually be recovered through future development charges.
So for this for this particular report, it's it's. It's money that's just will be, we're anticipating collecting down the road as we go along, so.
That's correct.
Bank, we're putting out a fictitious number in the bank, but we feel we'll we'll. We're collected through the through the growth of development over the years. And I and I guess are those numbers pretty safe? I mean, to go with, I mean. It's based on what we anticipate growth to be, right?
That's correct. Through you, Mr. Mayor, and and part of. And, and part of why the Development Charges Act requires you to update your background study at least once every five years is because it recognizes that things do change. Growth may slow down, growth may speed up. You know, where it slows down, you, you're not going to spend the money. If you don't have the growth, you know, you're going to push off those capital programs. If growth speeds up and you need some of the growth earlier, then you may actually bring some more of the growth projects into earlier years through your capital budget process. That part of it is reviewed every year as part of your budget process. But what we want to make sure is what is our best estimate today as to what your growth is going to be over at least the term of the bylaw? Not to say that that can't change for a, a number of different reasons.
Okay, I'm assuming then that's, that's a pretty, it's a conservative number?
We try and be as realistic as possible with what is going to happen in the first five years of the forecast period. You know, whether something happens in year eight or nine or 10 or 18 or 20, you know, it's a little more difficult to predict some of those things. But we do look at your capital budget and forecasts that you currently have, and we try and make sure that first five years is pretty solid. But understanding you will have a look at your capital forecast and these growth-related projects annually through your budget process each year until the next development charge gets updated five years from now. And where things have slowed down or sped up, we make those adjustments every time the DC gets updated.
Okay, reason, I mean, one of the reasons why I asked, because I look back over the last number of years and I don't have any numbers in front of me or anything to show. But I saw that one year we were really under, under the development charge predicted for that year by Big Mus. I think Brendan is nodding there. I think he understands what I'm talking about. So like, how do you, I mean, what do you, how do you make up for that? I mean, it's, because we had one kind of a dry year there pretty much in the last four, five years.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. If, if there is a slow year, and this year is a perfect example of what might be a slow year because of COVID. And it's not to say that the growth won't still come at some point and that you won't need the infrastructure to be put in place for them. However, you may have already pushed off some of the capital program that you were going to go with because the growth hasn't come. And that's part of that budget review that you, staff would have already gone through for the 2020 and 2021 budget.
So we could be spending money we don't have. So I assume we go out and we borrow that money. Is that right?
Yeah, I was just going to say through, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to add to that. So that will be a case where if, if we find that our development reserves, and maybe Stephen can speak to this a bit better, but if our development reserve funds are lower, then that's where we'd be in a position where we borrow money in, in, for that period of time to carry us over until the fees are collected through the development as a crease. So it's a bit of a balancing act there.
Okay. All right. I got the picture and it's, I know it's tricky and it's, you know, it depends on economics and a lot of other things. But yeah, we thank you. A great report. Obviously a lot of work into it. Thank you very much, both of you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to clarify through town staff or Nancy. So these development charges are paid for by residents that move to Grimsby, right? This is, so when you, when you build a house in Grimsby, you pay a development charge. And, and so when, when we're talking about increasing these, like we're charged, this is like the tax you pay when you originally built your first home in Grimsby. And then afterwards, you pay annual property taxes. And so when we talk about like putting these studies and fees and stuff into the development charges, it's all coming from, from the people who live in Grimsby. And it's just, we take it out of the levy that we charge every year and we, and we charge it to, to new homeowners. And I guess it gets paid through the developers, but is it the developers who pay it or is it the homeowners that pay it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely. It's part of the development costs, but all of, all development costs get passed on to that new homeowner or that new business owner. It's, it's both residential and non-residential growth that we're anticipating in here. But yes, I mean, the land value, the construction price of a home, any permit fees, any planning fees for subdivision agreements, all go into the total cost of new homes, new businesses that are being constructed within the town. And what the development charge does is it helps to pay that initial incremental growth capital that is required to help service. If you think of, you know, your facilities, you know, if you, your recreation facilities, for example, and parks and stuff, the more people you have, the more open space and indoor and outdoor recreation facilities you want to have to offer. So that if you've been providing a service in the past to your community, the more you layer on more people, you don't want the service that you've been provided in the past to erode and be less because you have to offer it to more people. You want to be able to ensure that you get additional green space, you can develop parks, you can put more soccer fields or ball diamonds, you know, additional indoor recreation facility space in place so that you can continue to provide in the future a growing population the same way you have in the past. And that's really what the development charge allows municipalities to do is get that incremental, one-time capital component. Otherwise, you'd be raising taxes for everyone to allow growth to come. Now, it's capital only. So once you've expanded your, in your infrastructure for all of these services, that ongoing maintenance and operational costs for those facilities and that infrastructure becomes part of what is paid for through property taxes and water wastewater rates for all customers, including the new customers. So, you know, it's really trying to reduce your property tax and water wastewater rate increases to deal with the initial capital and recover that from the growth that it's being put in place for. Does that help?
It does. I, I feel like that there's been a little bit of an attitude of like, we'll save money on taxes by, by including as much as we can on development charges. And so, yeah, we want to, we want to keep our taxes manageable, but, but we need to remember that it's through efficiency and proper management and, and that if we just move from one pile to another pile, it's, it's all coming from the residents of Grimsby, the current and future residents. And myself included, I'd like to put an addition on my home or I'd like to build a new home. And so, so the taxes that we defer from the levy to the development charges, they're still paid by the people who live here or the people who will live here. And so, thank you. I know this is, it's very prescriptive. There's a real method to how much we can charge so that we don't overcharge on the development charges. Like we can't just tell people, hey, you want to live in Grimsby? Pay for our stuff, right? It's our responsibility as a council and as the staff of the town of Grimsby to, to manage our resources properly so that we don't have to continually raise taxes. And so I just would like to have it said out loud that you know, there's only one taxpayer. And I'm happy that we, that we've, that we've undertook this review. And I, and I'm, and I'm happy that, that we're, that it's controlled. And so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Just a clarification. The prob, the development charges is a continual balancing act because you don't want existing developments to end up paying for new developments if our development charges don't cover the infrastructure. So we have to cover the infrastructures going in. So the existing homes aren't burdened by new development. So that's where the balancing act is.
Yeah, I understand that.
Need a mover and second or seeing no further questions? Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frank. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frank. Resolve that report DPW 20-50 dated December 21st, 2020 be received and the development charges background study dated December 21st, 2020 by Watson and Associates be received and that a public meeting with respect to the development charge background study be scheduled in, for February 1st, 2021 and that public notice of this meeting be provided in local newspapers and the town of Grimsby's website no later than January 8th, 2021 and that the final bylaw be brought forward for council approval, no earlier than March 1st, 2021. On favor? That's carried. Up next, we have a resolution that was brought forward last week by, as a notice of motion by Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Cadwell, did you want to comment on that? We need a second or Counselor Ritchie, you want a second? All right. Any discussion before I read it? Counselor Cadwell.
There we go. Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. You hear me all right?
You're muted. There, you're, you're not unmuted now, so.
Okay, you hear me all right? Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan. I just want to, I wrote down some comments, so I'm just going to read from my, my notes here. So I just, I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify and provide some additional background with respects to this notice of motion we have before us this evening. We have commercial vacancies in our downtown and unfortunately, we may have more soon. As we all know and often hear from our constituents, business owners, COVID is really challenging the local business community, especially our smaller retail businesses in our town. Now, while I don't have all the answers, I know, I know there have to be additional ways that the town can intervene and support local businesses in a meaningful way, much like we did this summer with the installation of the barriers along Main Street West, for an example. So my notice of motion tonight is intended to provide council direction to our, to direct our professional staff to explore our options in this regard. And because doing so will take time, energy and staff resources, I thought it most appropriate to make such a request formally through council. Again, I don't know what the solution is and what the options we might have available to us, but I would like staff to look into this and report back to council in the coming weeks. Hence this notice of motion. Just a few points. COVID-19 is forcing communities to think and act outside the box when it comes to developing tools and means to offset the devastating effects of the pandemic. Commercial vacancy rates in our downtown and around community could negatively impact the Grimsby brand and reputational damage could occur. COVID-19 is not going away anytime soon. And local business owners know and acknowledge this, and we are very concerned, especially with the now, the lockdown looming, coming, coming forward. Hopefully, a solution can be identified to help local businesses transition out of COVID-19. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just also wanted to comment that I've always said this with COVID is that in the emergency services world, you know, as COVID goes on, you're, you know, and I get it that people are always looking at government, what have they done? What are they doing? So forth. We'll always be judged on, on the recovery phase, on how we come out of COVID. That's what people are going to remember at the last, at the end of all of this is how do we do, how do we perform coming out of COVID? So I think it's, it's great that, and I'll be supporting this motion that to me, this looks, this, who knows what the answers will be, but you know, anything to help to transition to come out of COVID will be beneficial to us, I think, if there, if there is indeed something we can do.
Thank you, Counselor Dunstall.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I, I would like to comment, and that is that I, I understand Counselor Cadwell's request. My, my concern is that we're just about to go into lockdown on the 26th of December, and that's for a period of 28 days. My, my hunch, and it's just my opinion, it's more like maybe two or three months. And my, I have a concern, and that is burdening the staff with any more work than what I would call essential services, because that's what we're all inclined to. Well, the province wants us to only do essential things at this point in time so we can all try and recover from what's happening in, in the current climate we're in. So I would ask if maybe staff have a comment on this or suggestion, what's involved? Maybe nothing has to happen right now. I like what Counselor Ritchie suggested about the recovery point, but I don't think we're there right now. I think we're, what I would like to say in the eye of the storm, and I don't think we're out of it yet. And like I said, I think it's two or three months before we start to see the effects of vaccine, the effects of the spring and the, the lockdown taking the effect that it has taken in the past when we locked down in March. So I, I would ask that, could staff have a comment on this?
CAO, do you want to comment?
A point of order, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I don't know why we're having so much discussion about a notice of motion. I thought they were just tabled and.
It was a notice of motion last week. It's, it's tabled. It's on the floor now.
Okay, then I apologize.
No problem. Noted. CAO, did you want to comment?
Actually, I can, I can comment a little bit if that's, if that's okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Obviously, it's, it's difficult to plan and strategize because as, as we all know, the landscape is always changing. You know, it changed so quickly over the last couple of days. But I think what, what we can do, there's some things that we can continue to do which are, you know, ensuring business owners are made aware of all the supports and programs available to them. For example, there was one just announced today where small, small businesses are eligible for between $10,000 and $20,000 to use as they deem appropriate, which is, which is an interesting approach. That's not been something we've seen before. You know, we'll continue. I'm, I'm a member of the Regional Emergency Rapid Response Team. So every week we meet and talk and ideate around things that we can do to help support our local businesses. It's the group of EDOs and stakeholders from around the region. We've got our digital Main Street happening. You know, there, there are things that the town might be able to do from a, from a property assessment perspective. There was a tool that was, that was mentioned by the province a number of weeks ago. I mean, maybe exploring that, you know, continuing to deal with patio expansions and things like that. And we have been looking through the EDO community at exploring an opportunity very specific to Niagara, and hopefully we're going to get some traction on that. But I think, you know, at this point, it's, it's sort of, let's ideate and let's think about what we might be able to do. So I, I mean, I'd be open to considering, you know, putting something together and working with the rest of the staff here to put something together in terms of what we consider could be options. But I think at this point, we're doing some things. We have to keep doing those things and then figure out if there are, in fact, other, other ways and means that we can, we can be supportive.
Thank you, Adam. Counselor Vardy.
Thank, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. One, to Adam, have you had a chance to review this motion? And Counselors, Counselors' remarks in the preamble?
I did. I was watching council last, last week, so I was aware of the notice of motion. It's pretty general. Happy to, you know, happy to take it back and take a look at it.
Was it reviewed at the active committee at all? Was it reviewed at the active committee at all?
No, it was not.
Okay. All right. Were you able to provide guidance?
Yes.
To councillor Cadwell on it?
Yeah, in a general sense. I mean, I think the idea was that we've been having conversations, just, you know, as we do, as the Chair of GDAC, he and I communicate quite a bit, and I think his thought was, you know, would you and staff be willing to take this back and look at it and see if, you know, shake the bushes, shake the trees, and see what falls out? So there hasn't been sort of a specific initiative or agenda or series of things we've been considering. It's just, hey, let's put our heads together, let's take a look at what we might be able to do. And that's been sort of the extent of it.
My second question was, in terms of the COVID relief, I understand we just got $120,000 to help with that. Although Lincoln, I believe, got something like 1.2 million. And I wonder if you might be able to explain how that was, or perhaps our CAO could explain that, because it seems like quite a significant difference when we're all pretty much facing the same issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Through councillor Vardy, I could take that question. Yeah, we received about $137,000 for Phase 2, and Lincoln, I think, was about $97,000. Now, they applied for the additional funding. If you recall, Steve Greniger and I did a memo to council saying we wouldn't qualify for the additional funding because we didn't run a deficit through COVID. You had to prove to the province you actually ran an operating deficit, and we did not. Whereas I believe Lincoln and Pelham, who received some funding, were able to demonstrate that deficit, and so they did receive that additional grant. But we did not qualify for that.
So, I mean, just help me understand. Is it that they mismanaged things so badly, they got into debt, and we did so well? We didn't need any money? Because it just, I don't know, it just doesn't jive for me. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, I would never say any municipality mismanaged. That's not our responsibility. What we worked on was mitigating very early on. If you recall the report we did back in April, that we laid off a number of staff, you know, March 17th, as soon as we heard. We took some serious mitigation efforts, because we didn't feel there would be any type of funding from the province. So we just aligned our, you know, reduction of revenue to our costs. All I can speak to is the Town of Grimsby, because we mitigated so much, we didn't qualify for that second grant.
All right. Thank you, CAO. Councillor Cadwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you. Just a couple of comments. That's why in my, when I was just reading my information, I was, I wrote in coming weeks, which is very important to councillor Dunstall's thoughts of how staff is busy they are. And also, and I was, a couple of weeks back, I dropped my car off to get an oil change, and I walked home, and was walking through the downtown. And I noticed there was five, I've counted, unless there's been more since. At that time, I counted five emptied stores in our downtown, from, what, Elm Street to Christie Street. And I thought, you know, this is not good. Well, that's why I had, it kind of led me to speak with our Economic Development Officer, Adam, just if there's something we can do. So anyways, that's how that kind of got generated. Also, I'd like to just comment too, with the restart program that was announced last Wednesday. It was in the St. Catherine Standard, a little bit to what councillor Vardy was talking about. We got $137,000. It's called Restart, to help us through the COVID. So in the way it was initiated and figured out, it was, the Town of Grimsby was based on per capita, and maybe our CAO can expand on that a little bit, but I'm only just quoting what I read in the standard. Ours was based, the amount of $137,000 was based at a capita of $5.01. So that's how we got to, so again, if staff wants to comment, I'd appreciate that too, but that's what I was reading in the St. Catherine Standard. I sent an email to Stephen, our treasurer, right away, the next day, and said, "This is great news." So anyways, just a little history on that. Thank you.
Councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know if councillor Frick wanted to speak. I've spoken once already on this issue, and I see his hand is up there, so. If he wanted to go before me.
You go ahead. He'll go after you.
All right. Thank you then, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments in regards to some of the councillors, some of the comments they've made. And again, the, you know, this is a rapid response opportunity. That's what we're looking at, and I don't sit there and pretend that this is going to be the end-all recovery for COVID, and it's not going to be the, but it should be the start. And this is something in GDAC that I know that I've talked to other members of GDAC many times, is that we will be judged on how we come out of COVID. And to me, what this does is just puts a start. We all know that everything's changing on a day-to-day basis, but when I look at lockdowns, like we had to lock down the last time, hopefully, this, I don't see how it gets worse, but this is as worse as it gets in the economic world. And this is why during this next month, I don't want to put pressure on anyone, but I do think that if we have some potential opportunities to come out in a month, two months, I think it'll put this community ahead of the game. And that's one of the things that I know that some of the members of GDAC and myself have talked many times about.
Thank you. Councillor Frick.
Sorry, I could have, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could have spoken before councillor Ritchie, but it doesn't really matter. Yes, I don't know. I wouldn't want to be second-guessing COVID. You know, when we were in dire straits not so many months ago, and I would think councillor Dunstall probably can, felt the pain like everybody else, we never went into the type of lockdown we're now going into. So it will get, it would get worse. I mean, it could get worse again, because if you look at what's happening in the UK right now, they've got another strain of coronavirus, which is spreading even faster than the old one. So we don't know where this is going to go. But I do commend councillor Cadwell for bringing this particular motion forward, and I think we should, we shouldn't sit on our haunches and not do anything. We should need to do something. And I don't know what that is from a municipality point of view, because we are limited as to what resources we have that we can use to help the downtown businesses. You know, I speak, when I try and speak directly to Adam, I'm sure he's still online there somewhere. I mean, you know, councillor Cadwell mentioned that he walked through downtown, and he saw three to five, I'm not sure if he meant empty and/or closed. Were they closed or empty? It doesn't really matter. One is as bad as the other. But we don't know where those businesses are going to go. I mean, we don't know whether these guys now, if they're going to do another lockdown, and we go into gray sometimes in the near future, and we'll have more of businesses atop of the ones that are going to close, closing down as well. And remember, these are storefronts. These are merchants that are renting or leasing space. So when we go out to try and fill those spaces, we've got to try and go, we have to go to the landlord. It's a landlord we need to be working with to try and help put somebody back into those spaces. And I don't know how we're going to do that, but I'm sure that Adam has a plan in mind, and, or he will have a plan, because I'd like to see his input and his feedback. Not tonight, obviously, because it's going to be a fair amount of work involved in research, and you're going to have to find the key people that own these properties downtown. And because, I mean, I know some of the vendors that are, some of the merchants that are moving out, because they were, you know, strong members of the DIA. But I don't know if Adam wants to comment on that now, but I mean, it is not, we cannot second-guess COVID. You just can't. It's impossible. So let's prepare for the very worst, and let's try and instrument, be instrumentally doing something. And I don't know what that is, but, Adam, could you speak to it if you don't mind? Because I know you have a little experience, a little few ideas around them.
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the idea of working with the landlords or the owner of the property is an interesting approach. We've seen that in certain cases, in certain downtowns. I know in Niagara Falls and Oryary, for example, a lot of the landlords are absentee landlords. They're in Toronto, and so they don't pay much attention to what's going on. So there's maybe something there, for sure. I think what I think would be really advantageous in the short term is for me to go back to my counterparts in economic development and sort of look to cherry pick from their best practices, see if they're doing anything unique. Maybe we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Maybe there's things that we can do that have been successful elsewise. But I think it's, you know, it's just taking the time to very candidly focus on what we can do as a municipality, what we should do, what we might do, and then, you know, make some decisions from there.
Adam, do you see this as a bit of a challenge? I mean, it's difficult to predict where we might go with COVID. We just don't know. But I mean, what would be the challenge for you if you took those three to five businesses that are closed or empty downtown? What would be your first approach to that? I mean, it's, where would you go? What would be your first move?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Probably try and have a dialogue with those business owners. I anticipate some of their...
Talking about business owners that are closed, and they're now empty spaces?
Right, but I would still try and...
I believe that's what councillor Cadwell was talking about. There's empty space downtown where merchants have left. Those are the spaces I think he wanted to look at filling. Is that correct, councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, that's what came to my attention, and there was five when I counted, as I was walking through town. Also, maybe we can look at what our, how our zoning is downtown too. What, how we can help by maybe looking at adapting and changing the zonings. Again, working with our staff, who have the knowledge to help us out there, that's all. And again, there's no timeframe on this. It's just something that I feel is important, and when we can get to it, obviously. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a good point right there. But anyway, we're talking about spaces that are empty, and the merchants are pretty much closed and have moved out. That's what I'm referring to, not with the ones that are there already. They probably need help too, but if we're going to try and fill those empty spaces, where do you start? And I see councillor Dunstall nodding up there and putting his hands up, that zoning is probably a good place to look at this thing. So anyways, I don't expect all the answers tonight. I don't. This is just late on you, so I do look forward to seeing some type of a plan, you know, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario type of thing as we go forward. As I said, we just don't know where COVID is going to go at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Adam. You don't have to respond.
CAO, I see you have your hand up. Harry?
Yes, just, I wanted to share with the mayor and council that there is a sense of urgency on behalf of staff to look at this. So we're going to look, unturn every stone. Adam's doing some research now. Our planning team is doing some research. So we're huddling sort of a hot team to look at this. So we're, you know, if the motion's approved, we're going to look at every aspect to help those in need today, and those in need maybe in a few months from now.
Councillor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I understand where councillor Cadwell is coming from, and councillor Frick as well, with concern with the vacant properties. I just want to make sure that, and maybe you've already taken this into consideration, that we're not telling the businesses, you know, this is what you want. We go to them, we ask what you need. So we actually have that open dialogue with them as to what types of tools and supports are they looking for. You talk about maintaining and encouraging the vibrant downtown and support the local business community. So I think really engaging with the DIA and speaking to either the vacant landlords or the current businesses to ask what they need, and then working your tools and your rapid-response solutions around what they're identifying as are their critical needs. Because sometimes you can hand them something, and they say, "This isn't what we wanted. This isn't what we, you know, what we needed more was this type of an action." And we kind of experienced that when we dealt with the patio and the patio fees and the issue there. And it was like, no, this is what we needed. We needed to have a reduction in our fees for the insurance costs, et cetera, that kind of thing. So I think it's really important that we don't just, from the top down, say, you know, "Well, this is what we've got, and we're going to give you." It's like, what do you really need, and how can we frame that through the rapid-response tools that we have? So just, it's making sure that we do that two-way engagement, right? Adam, if you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Councillor Dunstall.
Thank you, your worship. This, I know we're taking too long on this, but this is really an important subject, since we're in this mess we're in. And if I might mention to councillor Cadwell in his walk, I think there's only three businesses that come to mind that were shuttered earlier on, and not so much recently. The other empty buildings are, because there's actually some positive movement. And I brought this up a couple of weeks ago at the chamber board meeting. I'll use a couple of examples. One is the Mrs. Greenway. So she's moved into the Home Hardware building and taken 50% of its occupancy. And that Home Hardware building became empty prior to the pandemic. So that wasn't a pandemic problem, that just the franchisee decided to close up shop because he wasn't happy with his performance there. So that's a good thing that's happening. I had an empty building, and I now have had it occupied within a month, which is, I think, thinks a miracle. And it's a business at the other end of town that's moving into my building, so there's going to be another empty building again, but there's progress happening there too. So I don't think it's all really bad, but I think it's going to get worse. We haven't lost a restaurant yet either, by the way, which I think is really good, but I'm a little nervous now with the second lockdown, that we might risk that. And we mentioned about the most recent, as of today, the recent provincial funding. I think that's a match dollar for dollar, which I've only just read it preliminarily, but that's going to be hard on some businesses who don't have dollars to spend, having to try and match a dollar that they don't have. So, and I'm hoping that maybe the government would look at what some businesses have already spent, and I can think of individuals that have tried to enhance their business to no success right now because of being locked down again, because it's all for naught. So, and maybe that's something we can help with from an economic development officer's point of view to help small businesses with other levels of government that are, you know, maybe putting the restrictions are too tight and be a little more open to some changes to them. So, but I think we're, you know, I think we've only lost three businesses downtown, even though there's five empty stores right now. So, and there is some good activity going on. So it's not all bad, but I think it's going to get worse before it gets better because of the new lockdown coming up. So anyhow, those are my comments.
Councillor Frick.
Sorry, I'll make it short. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want councillor Ritchie to think that I cut him off there. I totally agree with him. I think we do need to get ahead of this. I don't know how, but we do definitely need to get ahead of it. So certainly endorse that, and I will think that Harry and Adam will push the boat on that one. But I just want to make sure that also that Adam and Harry, or whichever, you work closely with the DIA. I mean, we have ears on the ground there. I mean, the merchants downtown and the members of the DIA are very close to what's going on down there. I know that our chair, Mike Willis-Craft, has been working on a number of things. And I think, Adam, if correctly, if I'm wrong, that you have been working with Mike on some of these things together already. So you've kind of got your foot in the water already, which is great. So anyway, so I just want to let you know, the DIA is also doing things to try and help. So I think the two groups, plus maybe the chamber, whatever, you can push this out and get this thing moving and get some kind of traction. I don't know where that is. Again, as councillor Dunstall said, it's getting worse. You know, it's, we're going through the eye of the storm, and we need to get out the other side. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, I'll read the resolution. Moved by councillor Cadwell, seconded by councillor Ritchie. Whereas the global COVID-19 pandemic has radically altered the way humans gather, interact, and even walk down the street. Globally, the heightened fear and awareness of this virus and the vital physical distancing measures that followed has touched nearly every aspect of people's lives. As a result, main streets across Canada have transformed from bustling centers to vacant spaces in mere days. A shift in how main streets are used can support the triple bottom line for health, local business, and community. Whereas the Grimsby core commercial downtown areas are susceptible to additional variances and heightened vulnerability as a result of COVID-19. are susceptible to additional variances and heightened vulnerability as a result of the pandemic. Whereas it is one of council's guiding principles to welcome, nurture, and support businesses to contribute to the financial sustainability of our town. Whereas council's collective priorities for the town of Grinsby include business attraction, growth, and retention. Whereas the town of Grinsby wishes to utilize any and all tools reasonably at its disposal to maintain and encourage a vibrant downtown and support the local business community throughout the town during these challenging times. Now, be it resolved, staff be directed to investigate additional rapid response opportunities available to the town to safeguard the viability of downtown Main Street areas as the focus of the community. All in favor? Let's carry it. Remove to, uh, section eleven. Notice of motion. First notice of motion is, uh, the subject's responsible growth, regulating height and density in mixed-use developments. This was brought forward by Counselor Sharp. Whereas the GO Station Secondary Plan was approved by the previous town council in twenty eighteen. And whereas our strategic priorities, council has made a commitment to responsible growth. And whereas council would like to review the GO Station Secondary Plan to ensure it meets our priority of responsible growth. Now therefore be it resolved that staff prepare a report so council can review the GO Station Secondary Plan. B, whereas Grinsby has an increase of mixed-use condo-type developments. And whereas the weight density defined in mixed-use developments governs only the size of the entire building compared to the size of the lot area and not the total number of residential units within the building. And whereas council would like some control over the maximum number of units in mixed-use developments and the mix of single, two, and three-bedroom units to promote a mix of demographics who can reasonably live in these developments. Now therefore be it resolved that staff prepare a report regarding an official plan amendment which adds language to our official plan to divine the density of mixed-use developments and the maximum number of residential units in these developments. I acknowledge that this notice of motion will be given consideration at the January eleventh, twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting. And we have a second notice of motion. This notice of motion was requested by Counselor Ritchie. And it's to support Counselor Suds, the city of Ottawa, in regards to her letter in regarding changes to the municipal act regarding vacating a seat of a member of council. I acknowledge that this notice of motion will be given consideration at the January eleventh, twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting. Move next to correspondence. With correspondence, the COVID. Counselor Bothwell.
I just want to lift one of the pieces of correspondence, please. Item under, uh, Planning and Development. Um, it's an, it's C ten Niagara region supplemental information related to the amending agreement to Niagara region interim, intermunicipal agreement. Second, third from the bottom.
When will that come up? Okay, alright. Alright, seeing no further amendments to, uh, correspondence, uh, need a mover and seconder? Moved by Counselor Frick, second by Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Frick, second by Counselor Cadwell. Resolved correspondence under administration and finance with reference to the COVID nineteen vaccine distribution tax task force, Niagara region declaring a state of emergency on mental health, homelessness, and addiction. Temporary cap on food delivery service charges. Support for nine-eight-eight crisis line and the correspondence under parks, recreation, and culture with reference to Miller's Creek Marine Resort Development. And the correspondence under public works with reference for an interim cap on gap plant. I think it says it's gas plant and greenhouse gas pollution. Notice of passing twenty twenty education development charges and policy for timing of development charges, calculation, installment, and interest. And that correspondence under planning and development with reference to the MPCA Board Minutes of November nineteenth proposed regulation under Ontario Heritage Act, Bill one oh eight. Enforcement of orders under the ROA twenty twenty, changes to the Conservation Authorities Act and Conservation Authorities' role in land use, planning, notice of public meeting for planning matters, renewable energy policies, amending agreement to the Niagara region intermunicipal agreement. Is that everything? How much? Yeah, okay. All in favor? That's carried.
I think, sorry, Mayor Jordan, just to
I think I started the last one. It wasn't blocked out.
I think there's two, there's two other ones, the Niagara region ecological land classification mapping and the Niagara region official plan consultation update.
Yeah, okay, I'll finish that then rather than reading the whole thing again. And ecological land classification mapping project and Niagara official plan consultation update be received. And, uh, moved by Counselor Frick, second by Counselor Cadwell, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. And we just need a mover and seconder for the lifted and then we'll, uh, get it on the floor. Counselor Bothwell and Counselor Sharp. Discussion on the lifted amendment. Counselor Bothwell.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just, uh, wondered if yourself or Regional Counselor Furtick could provide maybe a bit of further information on this particular piece of correspondence. It's, um, dated today and it's, um, a, a, a report from the Lincoln Niagara Transit Committee meeting, which was held November twenty-fifth, and it speaks to, um, financial considerations with respect to changing the way that the transit services are delivered through a new commission, um, a new, uh, full, full commission model of some type, um, governance model. And recommending further engagement with the twelve municipalities, because they need to get a triple majority on this, and, um, there's some significant funding impacts to it. And, um, no idea how this model is supposed to roll out. It does talk about incorporating, um, us as a smaller municipality and our new via or NRT on demand somehow into this model. Um, but it seems to focus more on, um, the larger municipalities with, uh, significant transit and capital costs. And it's asking for feedback by February the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. So I just wondered if, um, one of the regional councillors can give us a little information about what's expected, when we expect to hear more about this and what those budget implications might be.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Uh, if Counselor Furtick, if you're there, um, I, I'm not sure if you're Yep, oh, you are there. Counselor Furtick's on the, um, transportation committee. And he did alert me about this, so, uh, Counselor Furtick, do you want to wade in first? Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I see there's, uh, in this, uh, report that they've sent is, uh, not, uh, what I got at committee. So, um, in, in running through it, I guess my concern is, is when they look at the amalgamation of the, uh, uh, amalgamating, uh, the transit system into one system. So you're going to end up taking, um, Niagara Falls, St. Catherine's, and Welland, who have the transit systems. And those would be combined and to be used throughout the entire region. So in the, in, in the, uh, report, there was a, there was a schedule that showed, for instance, in year one, uh, Grinsby would be supporting the, the amalgamation to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I, I, I just want you to know, I've had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Harrison. What we're trying to establish is what the transportation levy is in year four or year five, because what's going to happen is all twelve municipalities are going to amalgamate together. So what's going to happen is the St. Catherine's is going to be, uh, right now, say they're, they, they're into the pot for twelve million dollars. Over a period of time, of four or five years, their pot is going to decrease and the, the costs are going to go on to the other municipalities. I'm all for it, as long as we're going to get the service and we're going to get buses running by our door every two hours or one, one hour or whatever. But there doesn't seem to be, right now, um, a defined plan as exactly how this is going to happen. So I am not for, um, um, saying to Grinsby, today you're gonna, you're gonna, the, you're gonna pay two hundred and fifty thousand bucks. And in year four, you're going to pay one point two or one point three million dollars. Unless you're going to be running buses by my door every hour, the same as you are in St. Catherine's and Niagara Falls and Welland. So there's a little bit of controversy that I'm, I guess controversy. I'm having some reluctance in saying to the committee, and I have already told the committee that I won't support something like that. So I, I guess right now it's sort of up and, up in the air as to how they're going to define what the transportation, what the transportation, uh, levy is. Now, let's understand one thing that in, in every transaction that takes place at the region, Grinsby municipality through their levy from the region pays eight percent. Doesn't matter what it is. They pay eight percent of, uh, uh, the health. They pay eight percent of transportation. Everything that Grims, that the region does, Grimsby's portion is eight percent. So I, I guess where I'm, where I'm at is that, um, until I see some clarification on the amalgamation of the transportation levy, I, I am not going to support it. Um, and this is why they've sent it to you. Now, we're not the only municipalities. There's nine other municipalities that are going to pick up the cost from the three big municipalities that have the transit systems. So, so there's nine other municipalities that are going to be doing exactly the same thing as we are and saying that today you're going to contribute two fifty, four years down the road, it's going to be one point two or one point three million. Well, I mean, that's up to them. I did not vote for it and I won't for it, so. So I, that's where I'm at right now. I think this is, uh, take a good look at it and go through it. If you have any further questions, I'd certainly be more than pleased to try and answer them. But at the present time, this is, is going to have to take a triple majority.
Um, Mayor Jordan, can I just add a bit, uh, to, to the, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Furtick. Um, just in reading the report, it does say that this recommendation was developed in consultation with local area treasures and CAOs. After consideration of a, a variety of strategies ranging between municipal transit grants and a full regional upload to a single transit levy, there was no option to fully consolidate transit into one system without a redistribution impact to municipalities. And that the adoption of a single regional tax levy would transition current transit, current transit funding from municipalities to the region based on the regional property value assessment. Um, so maybe the CAO knows more about those conversations. About redistribution from municipal levy to regional levy.
CAO, you're muted.
One quote in two thousand twenty, you're muted, but yeah, our treasurer did participate. He, you know, Stephen didn't agree that it should be through assessment. So that input was taken into account from the town of Grinsby, that it should be based more in ridership. But in most cases, um, the way the regional levy spread is through assessment. If you look at the police and and any type of, uh, set, uh, allocation, it's done through assessment. Uh, Matt, I, I forgot when Matt Robinson's coming to present to our council on this. Um, Sarah Kim, do you, are you aware? Cause they're going to come and do a presentation to us. So we'd be able to see firsthand, um, the whole, um, implications and the costing analysis that was done by the region. I think we set that up in February sometime. Sarah Kim, do you remember the date?
Yes, the February eighteenth meeting.
So the region will be coming here to discuss this a bit more.
Sorry, February fifteenth meeting, sorry.
So, so that's the drop dead date, because they have to have a trip, they have to have their votes in by the twenty eighth. So I guess that's correct, Sarah? That's our only option to hear them as well as deal with the matter on that date.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that, that's correct.
I just find that very, um, the, 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 the timing of moving this forward so quickly, especially in our budget process and just within, like, with such a short notice, um, to, to deal with such a large governance issue without some preparatory information. Uh, I'm sure having to absolve the package when it does come at the end of February, it's going to just be a little bit, um, you know, hopefully it's going to be very clear, but I'd, I would have liked to see some more preparatory information. So if it's all possible to get some background information on, on how this was arrived at, I think it would be great to have that shared with councillors prior to that upcoming meeting where we have to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. If I can just, uh, jump in there with a, a little bit more information. The, um, I would be pushing to certainly defer this because I, I do have the feeling that, um, the region's trying, um, to, to put a massive change in, uh, in a short period of time. And we can, we know we're following previous council when they went to look at bus systems for Grinsby. They were looking at, uh, a two million dollar a year cost, and I certainly don't think we'd be serviced, uh, better. We, we'd most likely be serviced worse, in a worse way than we are right now with, um, uh, Niagara regional transit. So what I'm, I'm worried about is that, uh, the region's trying to do a one-transit-fits-all. And, um, I, I'm just very leery of, of that happening. And, um, and I really don't think that, uh, the smaller municipalities will be well-served. So I, I think Counselor Furtick and I, um, are probably looking, um, to for some type of deferral until we get hard, hard answers on how much this really is going to cost us and really is going to cost the smaller municipalities, so. I'll leave it at that for right now, uh, because there's a lot of information in February. The end of February is looming quickly, so. Counselor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Between you and Counselor Bothwell, I think you covered most things off, as well as Counselor, uh, Furtick and Counselor Furtick and I have had a number of discussions around this. And it, it, I don't know where this came from all of a sudden, because in previous years, we didn't, we didn't, we weren't levied with this, with this particular transportation uh, in part of our, in our budget. I mean, what I, what I'm hearing is that they're asking us as a small community, a small, small town municipality to subsidize the transit system in the other three municipalities. There's something really unfair about that, and, and I, and we, and I'm not going to belabor this too much, but I think that we need to be ready to push back on that. Unless there's some really valid argument that we, that we can accept from, from the region. But I, I cannot, I just cannot imagine us going into the budget with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, bill from, from the region right up front for something that we won't even be using. I mean, if I go to St. Catherine's and I decide to use a bus in St. Catherine's, I pay. Why should we also pay as a taxpayer in Grinsby separately from all of that as well? So something doesn't click right there with me. And, and I, and us as council, we need to look at this. We need to make sure we push back and we don't get stuck with a bill that we shouldn't be paying for. And we look forward to, to Matt's, to Matt's presentation and more research, uh, before that time comes, so let's be prepared. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further, oh, Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just had one other question. I remember before I was on council, when I was sitting and watching council, um, Tony Quirk at the time brought the, um, when they formed the Niagara regional transit, we, um, there was a triple majority vote to allow the region we, there was a triple majority vote to allow the region to run a non-exclusive transit program. So now this would be, I guess, an exclusive transit. The region would, would run all the transit where before it was non-exclusive. So at the time, Tony Quirk said that, that our contribution through the levy, I guess, I guess, which is that 8% that councillor Furtick referred to was 213,000. So would we be contributing another $250,000? Or like, so, because you know how part of our taxes goes, so we charge taxes on behalf of the region, the school board, and the town of Grimsby. And so when you pay your tax bill, only about 28% goes to the town of Grimsby. About 58% goes to the region and 15% goes to the school board, the multiple school boards. But um, would we be paying it out of our levy portion? Or would, or would they just be taking, would they just be increasing our levy on the regional side? Like, does that 58% become larger? I mean, it's, it's complicated the way our taxes work, but I'm certainly not in favor of paying for Welland and St. Catherine's transit. I hardly ever go there. And so I guess my question is, how will they be charging us more? Will they just be raising taxes?
Councillor Furtick?
Sorry, it's not a matter of raising taxes. When I said 8%, if you take all the expenses, any expenditure that the region has, Grimsby's portion is 8%. It doesn't matter what it is. It's 8%. The $250,000 is what you paid yesterday or today for the via system. What I suggested is, why don't we keep the via system? Because Grimsby's doing extraordinarily fabulous when it's compared to the other municipalities. So I, I'm not, I would be for it to continue the via system if that's, if that's going to keep the cost down. But the, what they're proposing is one regional transit system. So when you have one regional transit system, you have to combine the other three. So the, the entire region has to pay for it. And, and I, this is what regional transit, regional government and regional transit system is all about. It's no different than the specialized transit that we have. The region pays for it, but whatever those costs are, you can be rest assured that Grimsby's portion is 8% of the total cost. That's all I'm saying. Don't confuse it with any other, with any other levy. Because the region charges us X dollars. And part of what we're paying for is, is, is our share of the total regional, regional costs. So the total budget is going to be assessed to us as Grimsby, but that percentage is only 8%.
Thank you councillor Furtick. I agree that the, the NRT, our local transit is doing well. But my question, and I think I understand that, so we pay about 8% of the regional taxes. They have a billion dollars. We pay about 80 million like into that. So whatever the region pays for, we're essentially paying 8% of. But in the case of our transit, we pay regional taxes and then we pay another $250,000 from our, from our local levy. So like from our Grimsby levy, we added $250,000 for the NRT, the via. And so we pay our 8% of all regional costs and then we pay $250,000 per year extra to have the via in town. So it does, but I agree, and I know this is confusing, but I agree that we are, we probably will be getting the, the, the bad end of that deal if we were to, to share. I don't know the total cost of transit in Niagara, but if we're paying 8% of all transit, it's going to be a large number and much larger than what we're paying for the, the NRT we have right now.
CAO?
Yes, I just want to be clear that the NRT in demand will continue on for a couple of years. They're not looking at consolidating the commission until I think 2023, 2024. I can't remember. But the main thing is if, if the commission does go forward, you know, beyond the regional levy. So councillor Sharp just answered your question. You know, we wouldn't be paying 250 locally. That would be rolled up into the regional levy. And yes, that portion would be higher. So when Matt will explain all this when he's here and you'll see how the numbers work at that time.
Do we know approximately how much transit costs in the three municipalities? Like, is it?
I think it's about 50 million. I think it's about 50 million net, but it's about 50 million net.
Five zero, so 50 million. So 8% of that, 10% of that would be 5 million. 8% would be like 4.2 million.
It's about 3.4, I think, that would be allocated.
I mean, $250,000, we got some via vans running around town. It's great. We've had like 1,000 users even in a COVID year. That's awesome. $3.4 million? Whoa.
But that's not, you know, I have to correct you, councillor. There's, there's a part of our levy, our regional levy in Grimsby is already going to the intermunicipal transit, it's not NRT in demand. I think it's about 1.4 million. So you'll see some of those numbers. You're not starting from zero. You're not starting from zero on the regional levy. You're starting at about 1.4 million to the.
So that's still another 2 million. Wow. And then that's to run the Niagara Falls transit, like.
I just, I just think we should probably wait till Matt Robinson gets in here and we have actual real numbers that we can talk about because right now we're talking about numbers that may or may not be accurate. So just on the sense of accuracy, I really think that we should wait for that presentation, so.
While I still have the floor and while this is on, can we receive this? And can we make a correspondence back to them, like asking for more information?
We're certain, we are, we are receiving it, but if you, if you want to word something.
Yeah, if we receive it and we just want to return it. Can we return it to them and asking for more information? I don't know.
We can do that.
Thank you.
So this is what we've added. And that the clerk be directed to request the region for more information regarding this item.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. Alright, seeing no further questions. I've moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Sharp. Resolve that correspondence regarding Niagara region supplemental information related to the amending agreement to the Niagara region intermunicipal agreement be received and that the clerk be directed to request to the region for more information regarding this item. All in favor? That's carried. Next meeting of the Committee of the Whole is scheduled for January 11th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. So this meeting is adjourned. We will re-adjourn with the regular council meeting at 9:20. See you in nine minutes.